Some say well, I say okay.
Good evening. It is 7:03 and I'm going to call to order the regular business meeting of the New Market School Board. We'll start this meeting, we apologize for the late start, we just had a budget workshop, but we'll start this meeting as we do all others with the pledge of allegiance, so please join me in it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a little modification to our agenda tonight because we need to have a public hearing because the district has received an $80,000 donation from a past alumni of New Market High School, junior senior high school, for the building project. In that, the donation is going to include some weight room equipment, a 10 by 16 shed, a new gym scoreboard, a new gym sound system, and an LED school sign, which is very cool. You know, it's a great opportunity for the town and I would open if anyone has any comment on what I've just said, any questions about it or any public input, we are holding our public hearing for this. It's a great opportunity for us, I think.
And I'm assuming the person wants to remain anonymous, is that correct?
No, it's in your packet, all the information's in there. The gentleman's name is Mr. Paul Hamel, he's a graduate of the class of 1953. He was an athlete and student leader when he was here at New Market and he, you know, feels he's been fortunate and had some success in his life and wanted to give back to the community. And so he's worked with Jamie Hayes in our athletic department and with Greg and Chris Mizony and I to craft a plan for this donation and, yeah, it's extremely generous. And the LED sign, if people have been by Co-Brown on Route 4, will be similar to the sign that they have. So, you know, very exciting opportunity, I think, for the community and we're very grateful to him and he certainly would like to come back for a dedication ceremony at some point.
That would be perfect. He would be more than welcome.
Name once again.
Paul Hamel.
Very exciting. And it made me sort of fantasize about if we did an ask, what might happen. So, we might need to do that because if someone does this, just generosity from the generosity from his heart, if we ask and give some targeted thoughts, we might get more benefit from that. And I think it really speaks to the legacy that the students feel and the connection to the school, even all these decades later. So, it's awesome. Any comment from?
No, that's incredible. I just, I guess we can't thank Mr. Hamel enough. We look forward to having a...
I look forward to the opportunity of having him come and seeing what his money has provided and for us to be able to thank him in person.
Very generous.
So, hearing no other comment, we will close the public hearing and we will accept that generous donation later in the meeting. The next thing is, I will open the floor for public comments, for people to speak to agenda items that we will address this evening. I see Amy Rossi coming to the podium. Amy, are you a resident of New Market right now?
No, as of three weeks ago, I'm no longer a resident of New Market and I would like to respectfully request the opportunity to speak based on almost 30 years in the town and over 20 years as an educator.
As we know as a board, we have a policy that states that non-residents are allowed to speak with board permission and I ask the board to grant that permission to Amy tonight.
Surely.
Thank you, Amy, go ahead.
Thank you very much. As you can see, there's a representation of the educators of the New Market School District and many more that regretted they were unable to come tonight, this evening, to express our appreciation to Meredith Nato, our inspiring leader who has shown us enthusiasm, determination, compassion, a vast knowledge of our field, and most importantly, an unshakable dedication to providing the children of New Market the best education that we can. For many of us, you have renewed a spark that may have dimmed a bit over the years, so learning that you are leaving has shaken us. However, we are also inspired by you to continue to learn, to collaborate with you this year, to continue the forward movement you continue to help us make as we dedicate our work of providing the children of New Market the best education that we can. Thank you, Meredith, for what you have done and continue to do to help us and work with us.
Any other public comment? Hearing none, we'll proceed with our agenda. Thank you, Amy, again for those comments. Meredith, we have our student report, don't we?
We do. So, Caitlin let me know this afternoon that she wouldn't be able to join us, so I have her report. I want to make sure I get it right. On Wednesday, October 23rd, Lori Warnock, Education Coordinator for the Northern New England Poison Control Center, came to talk with all National New Market Junior/Senior High students, I skipped down a line, about the risks of using e-cigarette products. And I know there was a parent presentation that evening as well. New Market High School Student Council, National Honor Society, and Student Athletic Leadership Team held their annual trick-or-canning food drive on Tuesday and collected 3,096 canned goods. Those will be donated to the New Market Food Pantry thanks to the students' hard work. The New Market Art Department and the senior class will be holding Fall Talent Night this Friday, tomorrow, November 2nd, at 7:00 PM. National Honor Society will be inducting new members on Monday, the 5th of November, at 6:00 PM. They'll also be hosting a blood drive from 1:00 to 6:00 at the high school next Tuesday, November 6th.
Appointments are available.
She reminds us that all students will have the day off from school for a teacher workshop on Election Day, November 6th. In the athletic realm, boys varsity soccer will be playing in the Division 4 finals on Saturday at 11:30 versus Sunapee High School at Southern New Hampshire University. And our girls soccer team played in the Division 4 semifinals today and I couldn't get on quickly enough to look up the results of that, but I'll check back on that later in the game.
Excellent.
And so if they are victorious in that game, they will play in the Division 4 finals on Sunday at noon in Leconia. So, we'll check back on that as we go through the meeting. I think that's all I had from her. Do we move into superintendent's report?
Feel free to do so.
Okay. The late start committee met last night. They're continuing to look at the logistics and putting together a survey to go out to the community regarding the possibility of switching start times. We have, as you know, been busy gearing up for professional development, which is next Tuesday, for the junior senior high school, at the elementary school, that is Parent Conference Day. And so our schools, a lot of our teachers have been here late into the evening, supporting, not supporting, but enjoying those meetings, I think, with our parents and sharing those students. We have coming up, if I can almost scroll ahead, our teacher leaders will be meeting in a couple of weeks to plan out some more of their work this year. They are leading much of the PD work at the junior senior high on Tuesday in coordination with the departments. We have Thanksgiving coming up before we know it, so we are sort of running into that holiday season. It's almost the close of the first marking period, so students are busily clamoring to finish some of those incomplete assignments at the junior senior high school. And again, I think our teachers and parents are working well to provide support for that. We're happy that the clocks are changing this week because between our athletic team's great success and the Red Sox, I think there's a little bit of exhaustion going around. Oh, and don't forget Halloween. So, I'll end there.
Any school board committee report?
Yes. We will be looking at the Policy Review Committee and basically on that one, we looked at those recommendations from the School Board Association for all the legislative changes. So, that's basically what you've seen in your packet today. We will be looking next month at health-related policies. And then on the SST side, the meeting that we had in October was related to enrollment and budget because their budget is really dependent on the tuition that each, comes from each school for each student. So, I thought you would be interested to know that the value that we get from those tuition dollars. Principal Callahan reported out that their dual enrollment with colleges and we have, this semester alone, we have 377 students at SST who are taking 422 college courses. And Meredith can explain how, what she's working on because that has typically been juniors and seniors because that's what SST has been open for. But this year's the first year that sophomores have been eligible to attend SST.
Yes, eligible to attend SST but not necessarily to receive those credits, which is an issue that I know Margaret has brought to our legislators and principals and our other educators have also brought it to their attention. But, yeah, those numbers have been great. SST is looking at some changes for next year where space to sophomores may be space available only as opposed to sort of first choice, I think, because they're really not poised, based on the funding levels from the state, to be able to have third years of programs. So, they are considering restrictions on sophomores for moving forward. But it's been a great opportunity certainly for students. And again, I think if that's something communities want to see continue, it's a great time to reach out to your legislators and encourage that because, again, without some funding on the table for the continuation of those third-year programs, it's hard to start up new programs.
And I spoke to several of our legislators immediately after that meeting and they were aware that it's out there and that they're working on it, yes.
And she also brought to our attention that there's some new programs that are being considered. Plumbing and electricity are at the top of that list for new programs at SST. This year has the largest enrollment they've ever had, 728 students enrolled at SST. And if anybody's interested, I have the tables that break down the student enrollment by school, by grade level, by course level, and by program.
How does New Market, like in the numbers, Ingrid, where do we fall on the numbers of students? I think we're up towards the top, aren't we?
I think we are. I think we're at 68 this year.
Yeah. We are, again, it's based on how many students. So, Exeter obviously has a lot more students attending the program because they're a much larger district, but we have a significant percentage of our juniors, seniors, and some sophomores attending programs there.
And the advantage, or one of the advantages of it is that they can count the courses that they take there for some of their graduation requirements. And that was another big discussion topic was, what are those courses that have been identified as fulfilling graduation needs in math and science, for instance?
Thank you, Ingrid.
Just note that the girls did win, in fact, four to nothing. So, congratulations of both of our soccer teams. We'll be in the state finals.
It's exciting.
More late nights, I suppose.
Mike, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Yeah, just a quick update from the building committee. We met, I believe, two weeks ago or a week ago, I'm losing track. And it's one of our regular monthly meetings. Folks can catch that on Channel 13. We are generally on time and on budget. We are, we went over a document at that meeting. Again, folks can find that online in terms of where we are on the budget, what projections are. You know, obviously, projects like this are fluid. We'll continue to update that and go over it every month. So, that's out there. A couple just updates people might have seen already. Steel has been going up at the high school. It's starting to look like a, like a, like a building on the, on the outer portions of it. The, there was some discussion over the past couple of weeks about the crossing lights at the, that were up in front of the school for a while, then were taken down. Those are going up or about to go up, back up. There is a, an issue that we're addressing as quickly as we can in terms of programming those lights. They have to be at a certain frequency. They're not at that frequency right now. So, we're working expeditiously to get that resolved so those lights can be back up and working along with the crossing signs. We know that folks were interested, obviously, in that. Finally, I think some paving is going to be coming up shortly. Folks might be seeing, finishing the road structure on the, on the loop behind the elementary and that, that will be paved, at least the course coat this fall. So, that can be, that can be used by vehicles appropriately to access that area. And also some of that will go on at the high school over the next month or so. Have I missed anything, Meredith? No?
Don't think so.
So, that's it.
Thank you, Mike, for that. Just to review the calendar, and some of these things have been touched on by Meredith, but it doesn't hurt to do them again. Next, Tuesday, the 6th is no school, teacher workshop day, voting day. For those inclined to do so, please go out and vote. Then, the school board will have a budget work session next Thursday. There was a discussion during the last one to move it up from 7:00 to 6:00 if our participants can do it. So, that might be a change to that. Then, there's no school again on the 12th, which is Veterans Day. Then, the 15th, we will have a school board budget workshop and possible budget adoption. And then, the building committee meeting, the next one is on the 20th at 5:00. And then, as crazy as it is, Thanksgiving break occurs the next day. And then, the week after, we will get our budget to the budget committee and have a meeting with them in early December for them to review it and adopt it, hopefully. And then, we'll have our first school board meeting of the month at 7:00 PM on the 6th of December. The next item on our agenda is the resignation that was alluded to in Amy's comments before. As many of you in the community have heard right now, by now, Meredith has offered her resignation to the board and will not be with the district past this current contract, meaning in June 30th of next year. And I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank Meredith for all her dedication and commitment to and compassion for the students, faculty, staff, and families of our district. I will truly, and I think we all will, truly miss your effective educational leadership. And I know that our future leaders, whoever they will be, will build upon the foundation that you have built for us. And on a personal note, I appreciate the positive working relationship that we've had and I am amazed by your ability to synthesize data and address things so quickly that it makes my head spin. Thank you for helping me be the best pitiful school board chair I could be. I appreciate it. And you will be missed. So, thank you. Anyone else have anything else to say?
I would repeat much of what you said. The joy of this job for me has been learning about education. And what Meredith has done is she's brought education to the forefront of our school board meetings. In the past, it's been everything, buildings and sewers and all that kind of stuff. And it's, and I thank you for that. You provided some super thought-provoking leadership in the field.
With that sad news, we need to talk about the search process moving forward. And I just, I've spoken to the, I spoke with Barrett Christina, the National, the New Hampshire School Boards Association about options there. I have not spoken with Nezdeck yet, but I wanted to sort of give you a, a sort of highlight of the conversation that we had so that we can make some decisions on moving forward. Basically, you know, with this news, it's time for us to focus on finding another educational leader for our district. You know, Al, I think you hit on it. You know, we focused on the building for so long, but I think really there's been a change in moving towards educational leadership in a real way and focusing on that. And we need to find someone that can help us do that. They offer outsourcing services through secondary school redesign, which is out of Rhode Island. And they gave me this basic fundamental information. And what we can do is decide if we want to have them come in and do a presentation for us, Nezdeck come in, however you guys want to handle it. But this is what I got from them. The rate for the search process entirely is $12,000. On top of that, there's expensive for mileage and advertisness, which are $500 each for a 30-day run. And I'll send us all an email. What we need to do is look at timing of things, you know, getting into Thanksgiving time. It doesn't really make sense to do things. We either need to do it in the shorter term or wait until after Thanksgiving is over. And we need to decide how we want to, what we want the search committee to be comprised of. We've already had three community members who have offered to there to assist us in a search moving forward. You know, we need to look at sort of one of two ways. One, do we have a similar process to what we had in the past and which I think sort of goes along with the collective collaboration process that we've had for other things in the district in the past few years. And that would be, you know, creating a group of community members that are dedicated to that process and then it comes to us. Another option is for us to take the lead and then from that point, determine through public forums and other communication options, ways to solicit input at that point when we get down to a more winnow group. So, we have to think about that. But, you know, I think that my, my feeling on that, and this is just my personal view, is that we have worked hard through the facilities committee and other things to get voices from a variety of sides of town and people in different roles. And I think that we need to include that personally.
It's absolutely not a question for me.
I just wanted to put it out there and that's just my view. I think that, you know, this, you know, just like this, this town is a community and I think that this role is a major part of that community because a lot of the younger citizens are touched by the decisions made in this role. And I think the more input we have, the better. I will, if you guys would like me to, I can see if maybe we can get some presentations to coincide with the 8th and the 15th.
I don't know how it bales, feels like this is my third time. So, do we just pick the School Board Association and go with that and see what's out there, do some fishing?
I mean, it's a known, it's, it's a verifiable reputable company that does it. We know, and if that's the case, that's what you will decide. We have to decide, I guess, where that budget, those budget dollars come from and how we want to spend them. So, would we like for them to come do a presentation to us before we make this decision? What would you all like?
I think at least that. And I can't recall, and this is just an open question, what were the composition of, not the particular persons, but the, where they were drawn for that.
It was, oh, 12?
Eleven or 12.
It was students, a student from the junior senior high school, teachers from both buildings, community members, parents, school board members. Am I missing anyone? And, and town official. I think Steve Fornier was on. So, it was really a cross-section of all, of all those folks.
And, I mean, why wouldn't we have something similar this time around? I mean, it would...
That's what I, I'm only suggesting it because it was suggested to me and I want to make sure that you guys had all the information.
Having participated in it, it worked very, very well.
I agree.
The input was so varied from, you know, from different perspectives.
I mean, it's just such a vital issue.
Especially more positive. So, I would.
Okay. So, would we like to see Nezdeck bringing the people in?
I don't know.
I mean, not Nezdeck.
I was gonna say.
The New Hampshire School Board Association.
I would, I would like to revisit it.
Okay. All right. Then that's what I'll do. I will coordinate that and try to get it next week, if not the week after, so we can get the, get that process going.
Thanks for doing the background.
No, I'm sorry I couldn't do more, but I just, you know, I wanted to get a baseline so we could start the conversation and then we'll take it from there.
So, last time we had, how many people? Two, only? New Hampshire School Board Association and Nezdeck.
Two, two firms.
Yeah.
And I don't know if there are other games in town.
I don't either.
I think those are the two main players in that. I mean, Meredith, you can tell them, but I think those are the two main players in that.
I mean, they're national firms, but they...
I think we need to have specific, my thing would be specific, New England.
Right. We ran it out last time, now let's...
Yeah. Okay. So, I will try to get those situations scheduled and we'll proceed from there. And we'll get back, if anyone in the community is interested in participating, please reach out and let us know and we'll take it from there. All right. Meredith, impact fees. We've got a legal opinion. Would you like to talk about that?
I can.
Please do.
Can we go back on that other subject just for that?
Yeah.
To try and save some time here. Elizabeth is very pro Nezdeck, uh, pro New Hampshire School Board Association.
Yeah. Because last time we tried to reach out and I'm just thinking, well, now let's try this, let's go back to this way and see what happens.
Yeah, I don't, I, my concern is that I don't think we should, if, if, if the rest of the group feels the same way, to parade someone in is, is not fair. I, I...
Without giving them a fair shake.
Yeah, I thought Nezdeck did a very good job last time, but I don't think Nez, I don't think New Hampshire and Maine, there's necessity there.
Ah, whereas these Rhode Island people are more of a New England.
I'm sorry?
The, the people from the New Hampshire School Boards Association are located in Rhode Island, but the New England thing is their forte, from what Barrett told me, their focus area. but the New England thing is their forte, from what Barrett told me. Their focus area. New Hampshire, Maine, us.
I can't look out one way or the other. Isn't, isn't New England in Nezdeck's name?
Yes. Yes.
And they do searches across the New England state.
Yeah, yeah, so.
It's six of one, half dozen of another.
I mean, I.
There's a price difference as well.
That I don't know, because I don't have Nezdeck.
I suspect there are certain channels through which this is advertised.
Yeah, I mean, there's definitely.
Where folks looked, I mean, so that's no secret.
Those would be the same.
Yeah.
Yeah, you hear the, you hear it on NHPR. There are two core ones.
That's the School Administrators Association, not the School Board Association.
There's schools, there's Schools Fearing, which is a jobs sort thing, and EdWeek, which is another one that has.
What would you probably get out of it?
You're gonna have to, this is, I've been three years, so I'm gonna have to refresh my memory. But last time we had, did the New Hampshire School Board Association?
Nezdeck.
Nezdeck.
We had Nezdeck.
We had Nezdeck and who?
Nezdeck and Net?
Oh, we had, you mean, who came and presented to us? Both of those. We had New Hampshire School Board and we had Nezdeck come to us.
So I'm not really.
But we worked with Nezdeck.
We worked with Nezdeck.
We chose Nezdeck out of those two.
We chose Nezdeck because we felt like they had more of an outreach.
Right. And now you're saying, you don't think that's appropriate?
No, I don't thi, I didn't say anything. I just thought we'd stick to the New Hampshire School Board Association.
What do you mean, stick to?
Just go, Al, just go use them. Like, not stick to them, whatever, whatever verbiage you want to use. Just use them instead of using Nezdeck as a title.
For what reason?
To look for a superpendent.
No.
Why, what are the others?
Yeah, what?
My move for today. I don't know why. I enjoyed when I worked with them for the two times that I worked with the New Hampshire School Board Association. I enjoyed them. I enjoyed Nezdeck. I.
Who did we work with? The School Board Association, or, no, was the Administrator Association the principal, right?
No.
You didn't use any.
That's, that's, yes, usually done, that was done in-house.
We didn't use it.
Before I got there.
It wasn't a board, so I didn't, I wasn't part of all the discussion.
Al, is what you're thinking that have involved in and decide that again?
Well, no, I'm trying to understand, I'm trying to understand the perspective. Nezdeck, as I recall from last time, had a much broader field than the New Hampshire.
Geographically.
Yeah, in terms of, and they're very, very involved in Massachusetts. And a great deal of their work is in Massachusetts, not up here. So.
And there's other firms from Rhode Island?
Yes.
But sort of.
But working with the New Hampshire School Board Association. Yes, they are, they are the outsourcer of choice for the New Hampshire School Board Association. Would you guys like for me to get similar information from Nezdeck? And then we could decide from there. And I will provide a sheet.
And I, all I can tell you is, from my experience, I think, I think that whoever we use who has the greater knowledge of the Hanford Maine area would be the one that I would go with.
Okay. I will ask that question.
The thought in the search process prior to that was, maybe some great talent in New York, in New Jersey and stuff. And that was not the case for the.
And I think even, even with the Rhode Island firm, there are some national feelers that are gonna go out. And I'm sure Nezdeck is the same. So I will get comparable information, share it with the board, and we'll decide on this as soon as possible. All right, Meredith?
Sure. So in your packet is an updated letter dated October 12th of 2018 pursuant to questions from the Building Committee Chair and Vice Chair that reiterates information from the 2007 legal opinion that we had provided, saying that the information contained there is accurate. You know, the main point essentially being that impact fees have to be used to increase building capacity. We know we've had portables at our elementary school. We're increasing building capacity. We know at the junior senior high, many of our rooms are undersized. We're increasing building capacity. So the board has the 226,000 and change still available to use towards the project. As we've been saying right along, but we have that in updated confirmed legal opinion on such.
Any questions about that?
Yeah, first of all, thanks for the legal opinion. I just, it feels, what's more comfortable on that issue now? If you read the statute on its face, it's more restrictive than what our ordinance seems to be. But we do have our opinion essentially saying we can use them for the building, school building project. The, and I, as I understand, Meredith, that these fees are allocated to the school, so it's not like we would, if we use them, we'd be taking it away from the town or something like that. They're dedicated to the school. So they're, they don't, they have a, they're not tax dollars, so they don't impact taxes. They may offset taxes ever so slightly if we're using them in lieu of bond funds. But I, I would suggest that we take a vote to use them, those fees, those impact fees on the project. I think we, it would be good for us to know at this point that as a board, we've decided to make those available to us. If we don't need to use them ultimately, then so be it, but.
I would just encourage you to do that at a subsequent meeting, since it's listed as a discussion item only on this meeting, just so the public has time to process that and weigh in.
Yeah, and there was a note from the attorney at bond, that the council is gonna end up having to approve the use of the impact fees. Is that correct?
For the ordinance.
And has, does the council, does the town administrator and the council have, share the same opinion about the use?
Yes, and did, going back to 2007. The ordinance hasn't changed.
No, 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 no.
To increase capacity of the buildings? Yes.
So when we go to the town council and get approval, they've been notified of this?
I have not shared the legal opinion. It's not really my purview to do that. But they have the ordinance and they have been collecting the fees right along. And they have the authority to determine if the board's request meets those needs. So that's a request you have to make of them. That the board would have to take a vote that it wants to use that and make that formal request of the council.
Gotcha. Gotcha.
So we'll have that actioned. And that's what you're saying. It's just a discussion item today.
Gotcha.
All right, we'll move that to a future agenda.
Yeah, just consider it though, too, in the context of all of our discussions at the building committee level recently, too. I mean, when we, when we started this project, we were very, I guess, budget-conscious. It's not over-budgeted. As I mentioned earlier, we're still on budget. But we're, you know, just getting out into open water here on this project. We're not, we've got a ways to go. And we've also got a list of ad alternates that we've been considering all along. Then at the last building committee meeting, you know, we made the decision as a building committee not to adopt any ad alternates right now, just because we're so early on in the process. These are things, these are wants that we've discussed early on. And, you know, that the dynamic nature of this process is that some of these will come up and you have to make decisions on them now. Like, you have to make decisions, you know, on, for instance, whether you delay work on a courtyard or until you end the project and you see how much money you have left. There are other decisions that we'll encounter along the way. At the end of the day, we may need those funds to, for the project itself and/or to consider very usable ad alternates, you know, on the project. So I, I just think it would be prudent to know whether or not those funds are available to us by voting and going through the proper process as quickly as we can, so we know what we have to work with.
In addition to that, you have to budget for those revenues to come in. So you would want to act, if you want those revenues available to you in the next fiscal year, you need to make those decisions relatively soon.
Yeah, it'll be an action, it'll be an action next week. We become specialists this meeting.
Meredith, would you and Greg would like to talk about the generator requests?
There's a letter, again, in your packet that came from the town administrator, the police and fire chiefs, on October 5th, I think, is the date. I think it was in the packet, the board chair folder for a prior meeting and didn't get distributed. So we put it in the packet for tonight. But essentially, they're requesting that the board consider purchase of a generator for the junior senior high school so that that facility might serve as an emergency shelter for the town at some point.
Do we have any idea of the cost of said item?
We certainly do. We priced it out before and there was no room in the project budget for it. But the committee looked at that and Greg can give you the number.
So as we look at that particular generator, we're projecting anywhere from about 180 to 300, excuse me, 280 to 300,000 dollars for a generator with a pad, the switchgear and everything that's associated with putting in a system such as that.
280 to 300, 280 to 300?
280 to 300.
So, would that have to be added onto next year's budget?
If the board decides that it wants to add that, then yes, you would need to budget for it. Right now, it is neither contained in the project budget at this stage, nor is it in our operating budget proposal. It's also something you could look at as a CIP item over several years. You could look at financing options for it to do a lease purchase over several years. There are a number of ways to consider that. You could look at future impact fees in several years. I mean, it's a large investment.
There may be some homeland grants that come through. They, they used to come through for generators.
The current, the current language has specifically precluded generators from being available for funding sources. But there may be grants again in the future.
You know, I know that we're considering a lot with the building project and the budget coming up and all those things. Could you guys, and I don't, this might be out, too much to ask for, and tell me if it is, sort of give an idea of maybe some of those potential other funding sources, so we can see if there are any?
Right now, there are none.
There are.
But we looked at all the homeland information grants last year and generators were specifically excluded from the list. They were excluded from the infrastructure fund list that the state put out that we took in almost half a million dollars from to offset some of our security pieces. So right now, that would be coming from local dollars. And again, that might be a potential CIP item to look at.
Does the town have any emergency facility funds?
I can tell you not contained in my budget for the town.
Just asking.
I can't ask any, I can't answer anywhere else, though.
I might suggest that at the end of the letter, which I thought would kind of perk my ears a little bit, and it says, "As members of the emergency operations team, we're more than willing to work with you to explore alternative sources of funding to complete this project." And it's signed by Fornier, Hoffman, Velasquez, and Chief Tru. And I think we ought to at least take advantage of that offer.
We have been. I guess that's what Greg and I are both saying. We have been working with them. We worked with them on building the emergency ops plan and looking at that. I think they'll continue to work with us, but right now, there have not been alternative funding sources available.
Okay, so they, all these individuals have explored?
We're all looking at the same sources.
Yeah, I mean, I think the biggest one that most of us would look at would be the homeland funding. And unfortunately, it's, it's the current funding formula for that excluded generators.
To put this back in context, this letter, which is in the materials for tonight, is a letter from these folks or signed by these folks, saying in not so many words, the reasons why it would be a good idea to have a generator. And I think we would all agree with it if money wasn't an issue. But again, going back to my earlier comments, this was, I believe, an ad alternate on our proposal. But in a budgeted project, you have to make choices. We would love to have a generator. Nobody's disputing that. And at both schools, quite frankly. But, you know, you just, we just have to make choices. And it may be that this is something that can happen down the road. As part of our construction budget right now, it's not prudent to commit to that. And as, as we've heard right now, there's no obvious sources after exploration to fund this. But I would just say very much appreciate the interest from folks, you know, in the spirit of town cooperation, you know, raising this issue. I think, I think it's very well-meaning. And again, we'd love to do it if we could. So.
Thank you, Greg.
You're very welcome.
Meredith, would you like to take us through the first reads of our policies?
Well, I think Ingrid gave you the highlights.
Yes, she did.
These are School Board Association recommended changes based on the changes to, through the past legislative session. So you have 15, 20, some odd policies. Nondiscrimination includes a clause related to gender identity that was not previously covered under the law. Drug-free workplace and drug-free schools just clarifies some statutory regulations, similarly with tobacco products. The minutes changes is a change pursuant to, change to the right to know statute. Public comment and participation at board meetings really is a revisiting of your existing policy. Crisis prevention and response, the first one is recommended for deletion because again, there were changes to emergency response plans, the subsequent policy EBCA required under the statute. Essentially, the changes are that we're required to collaborate with local emergency officials, which is not new practice for us, but a new requirement. And then that we're required to submit our emergency response plans to the state, which we, again, we've been doing for the past two years at least. Data governance and security is a new policy. This, again, was statute passed by the legislator last year. That's one that has some potential cost implications for us in the 10 to 12,000 dollar range. We're working with our, actually, Chris Cooney, our, one of our, our tech support staff member is going tomorrow with me to a training that the School Board Association is putting on specifically related to that. And Jason Carey has also been attending trainings on that topic and working with his association, New Hampshire School Technical, I forget the last letter. Debbie would know. Misty.
It's an A.
I forget what the E is. Technology educators, I think, actually. There we go. So they've been working on some collaboration around that policy specifically. EHB and EHBR are the data retention policies. And so again, there are some changes in how long we need to keep some different records. So we've made those changes. GADA is an employment reference and verification. Essentially, it's the last portion of that that's, that's the change. Again, a new policy. But the state passed legislation out of concern that people with histories of sexual abuse might be hired by school districts after having been released from other districts. So it's really making sure that if a district releases someone due to that issue, that, that we have made appropriate notifications to the state and, and other appropriate authorities. GBEC is the same policy as ADC, except it's the employee version. And there's also a student version. Similarly, the tobacco products, those are duplicate policies. Change of school or assignment for best interests and manifest educational hardship. Again, statutory change that now specifies a process under which a parent may request that a student be allowed to attend or change schools in their educational best interest. There's an appeal process to the State Board of Education that is new in the last year. Student conduct, again, some, some updates, minor updates there, along with tobacco. And then the last one, again, a new policy, but one we've been working towards as we migrate to our new website, hopefully. Maybe by January, is website accessibility and the grievance procedure for such. So again, that requires us to have a website that can be read aloud to someone who might have a visual impairment that allows people to have pictures that are on our website described to them. So you have to have a caption underneath every photo so that it can be described. There are other related changes, but essentially it's making it accessible to folks with disabilities. And that concludes the list of first reads.
Thank you. Meredith, I wanted to thank you and Ingrid for the time we devoted to the policy committee, because I have learned a ton about a lot of things when it comes to policy. And it's just so important for us to keep these up to date. So thank you for keeping us on track and helping us wade through them.
Lots more to come.
Yes, yes, there's more, but thank you.
Yes, there's the learning curve.
All right, so we'll move on to action items. The first action item is approval of the minutes from the October 4th, public and non-public meeting. I seek a motion to approve those minutes. We have a motion from Ms. McKenney and a second from Ms. Oliver. We have a motion from Ms. McKenney and a second from Ms. Oliver to approve the public and non-public meeting minutes from October fourth, two thousand and eighteen. Were there any amendments to those minutes? Hearing none, we'll move to the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I don't see the manifests. And I just.
I signed some last week, so maybe we're off cycle.
We might be off cycle. Do you wanna go get that?
Why don't we continue with the rest? And she'll go double check there, but, um.
The next thing, and I didn't think about that till I just said it. The next thing is the second reading of Policy AD.
So we reviewed this one at your last, um, business meeting. This is the district's philosophy, so it's reaffirming, um, that mission statement that we've described, your, um, commitment to reviewing it. It used to say annually, um, but hadn't been the practice, so it's been updated to say at least every five years.
And then we, do we vote on it now or at this?
This time.
Seek a motion to approve Policy AD with the changes made.
So moved.
Second.
Seek a mo- I have a motion from Ms. Oliver and a second from Ms. McKenney to accept, uh, Policy AD with the amendments. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's approved. The next thing is the, um, junior senior high, no, elementary school mixer purchase approval. Please go ahead.
Sure, there's a memo in your packet, and we spoke about this at a prior meeting. Um, we originally had one in the budget for the junior senior high school, but made a determination that for safety reasons, it would be appropriate to also replace the one at the elementary school. There was discussion about, should it be in the project budget? Because this is a need that we currently have, um, we discussed that it was appropriate for us to order it now and take care of that safety issue, so you see, um, the bids laid out there. And Greg's recommendation that we award the bid to Alternative Sales Corporation of Kingston, um, who is supplying, um, food service equipment as awarded at a prior meeting, for the other, um, projects, the other kitchen equipment, excuse me.
And that's fifteen thousand nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars?
Yes.
I seek a motion to approve the purchase of the ele- elementary school mixer from Alternative Sales Corporation, amount of fifteen thousand nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Ms. Oliver and a second from Mr. Kennison to approve the mixer. Any discussion? I'm glad we're taking care of this now, given the safety issues.
But we have to.
We had, well, there was no choice. We, it was a safety issue, and I'm glad we're taking care of it. Hearing nothing else, we'll move to the vote. All those in favor of approving this, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's approved. After that, we have the junior senior high stage theater sound system.
Yes. Greg, do you wanna speak to that one?
Sure.
I know you're waiting. You've been here full time.
Please, Greg, please.
We put out a competitive bid for, let me ask you back up. We, uh, hired a company to do a, um, a design for a sound system that would encompass the theater, which is really our cafeteria, so it covers that whole space. And so we, we took those, uh, design parameters and placed it out to a competitive bid, sealed competitive bid process. We received two bids, um, one from, uh, Total Calm Solutions and one from Clegg Sound. And in our original budgeting, we carried about, we carried thirty-five thousand dollars. This is, uh, slightly over, but it's only over by eight hundred and sixty dollars. And so this is a system for those areas, and we're, we're recommending moving forward with that. The funds for this are covered under the construction project. We're part of the bond, and we are recommending Clegg for that project. We also need to be able to get this moving now, because there's conduit runs in other areas in the, in this area that have to be run ahead of time. And so if we're going to do it, we need to kinda do it now.
I seek a motion to approve, uh, the use of Clegg Sound Associates for installation of a new sound system in the junior senior high cafeteria. The amount of that, um, is purchased is thirty-five thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars and twenty-four cents.
So moved.
Greg, I have a motion from Ms. McKenney and a second from Mr. Zink to approve the, um, this expenditure from the building fund. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to the vote. All those in favor of allocating these funds, just raise aye.
Aye.
Uh, the next thing that we have is a donation. Thank you, Greg.
You're welcome.
From the, um, NCEP for one thousand eighty-nine dollars. That is a junior senior high grant, um, for an X carve kit. I don't know what that is, but I'm assuming it's carving X is not. So we always are grateful to NCEP for the donation of the steadfast things that they donate to the school year, schools throughout the year. I seek a motion to approve and accept this donation, amount of one thousand eighty-nine dollars of NCEP.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Ms. McKenney with a second from Mr. Kennison. Once again, as always, thank you, NCEP, for your support. Anything else? Hearing none, we'll move to the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We talked at the beginning, um, about the generous donation from J.E. and Fern Hamel, in the amount of eighty thousand dollars for various items at the, uh, at the school. And I seek a, a motion to approve and accept that generous donation.
Second.
We have a motion for Mr. Zink and a second for Mr. Kennison to accept this eighty thousand dollars. Again, thank you wholeheartedly, Mr. and Mrs. Hamel. I hope that we have the chance to thank you a person someday, um, for your generosity.
Thank you.
We'll move to the vote. All those in favor of accepting this donation, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The last thing is approval of donation from Marls Enterprises LLC of.
Theater lighting.
Lighting for the theater, which is two thousand two hundred and fifty-six dollars. Greg, would you like to speak to this?
I suppose I can.
I can just say, um, before, before Greg speaks, we had an issue as we got ready to do some work in the, what will be the cafeteria at one, at, at, at a future stage. But our existing stage, uh, the wiring for the lighting was there is not adequate. That space will not be fully renovated until after next year, but we still have a drama improv program going on this year, and so, um, we were looking at, um, possibilities for how to kinda keep that program going, and I'll let Greg take it from there.
So, uh, it is, this is my family's, uh, business, and when I found the lighting system that was in bad shape, we couldn't reinstall it. And so I met with my, my two sons around the business, and so we met and we sat down and we, we wanted to be able to make some donations so that they could continue to use the theater. And knowing that we wouldn't be able to put the lighting system in, that it's gonna be ultimately in the final system, we felt that, uh, we were in a position where we could make a donation and provide the light bars and lighting for the theater and did it in and done before their November seventeenth, um, show that they have going on.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very, very much. I seek a motion to approve this generous donation from Marls Enterprises for theater lighting in the amount of two thousand two hundred and fifty-six dollars.
So moved.
Second.
We, we have a motion from Mr. Kennison and a second from Mr. Zink to approve these funds. Again, Greg, thank you and thank you for us, too.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Simon. That's our approval.
That we appreciate it very much. All those in favor of approving and accepting this, uh, donation, say aye.
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 Thank you, Greg. Meredith, did you wanna talk about the testing and all that's in our packet?
It's really in there as informational. We'll be doing a data update for you, but we receive those results and we try to share information that we get, um, with you as it comes. We do the same with our special ed data and, um, SAT data as it comes in.
It's good to have that. There's no need to go into an open session. Uh, just to review, our next meeting will be next Thursday, the eighth, most likely at six P.M. But we will get back to that. I will get with the board about, um, the options about the search firm process. Our next workshop will be November fifteenth, and it's, in this building, the, the meeting on the eighth will be down in the auditorium, um, on the fifteenth. No school next Tuesday. Go out and vote, and, uh, I seek a motion to adjourn the meeting at seven fifty, eight, seventh, seven fifty-six.
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Zink and a second from Ms. McKenney to adjourn the meeting at seven fifty-six. All those in favor, adjourn and say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.